Good evening and welcome to the Pasco City Council Meeting. The city thanks you for being part of our city government. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table and detailed agenda packet is available on the city of Pasco's website. Council asks that you silence your electronic devices during the meeting. Please note the seating within the council chambers has been reduced as a precautionary measure in an effort to reduce possible transmission of the novel coronavirus. There are two sanitizer stations in the back of the chambers and bathrooms are located down the hallway on the right-hand side as you exit the council chambers for hand washing purposes. If you're feeling ill, you may watch the city council meeting from the comfort of your home as it is televised on Spectrum Cable Channel 191 in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel. And lastly, council asks that everyone in the audience who wishes to speak during the visitors section or during a scheduled item section of the agenda sign in prior to the meeting. This sheet will be used to call a speaker forward. If you did not sign your name on the sheet prior to the meeting, you may still have an opportunity to speak by raising your hand at the appropriate time. Council asks that you first state your name and address into the microphone for the record. So for those of you who are here watching on television, it is a very unusual scene here at the city hall, but we are trying to do the best we can to meet the obligations we have and provide a safe environment for everyone and also trying to be an example, although we may not be perfect and you might see us do something like touch a finger in your mouth every once in a while, but we are here to do the best we can and please bear with us as we move along and it's been an exciting couple of months for me, so I just wanted to share that. So again, welcome everybody and we'll move right along to the next portion which is roll call. Can we have a roll call, please?
Alvarado.
Present.
Brajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Milm.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Roach is present, yes, thank you.
And Serrano.
Here.
Seven accounted for, Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate it. If you'd all rise for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you for the proclamation. The census portal did open for online submission on March 12th and obviously given our current circumstances, we are urging people to complete that census online, making it much easier for everyone to stay in their homes and still be able to give that very important information out to our government, especially in times like this. We know that emergency funding comes from results from the census. So again, just trying to encourage people to go out there and complete their census so that for the next 10 years, we have things that help us out during times like this. So thank you guys.
Well, thank you very much. I will tell you that I actually am participating into my part in trying to communicate that and was able to assist with a univision in Spanish to help the Spanish speakers get them motivated to do this. So it was quite exciting doing that and hopefully it'll motivate many others to sign up and do what they're supposed to do.
Yes, thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I would like to just read the census proclamation day proclamation. Whereas this document upholds the values of the city of Pasco to fully commit to an accurate and complete count of people within our city as mandated by the constitution and whereas an accurate and complete count is presidential in determining the needs of our community which shape business, our education system, roads, public transportation, healthcare, and whereas the 2020 census will enable our community to come together and meet the challenges regarding any potential undercount. And now therefore be it resolved that the Pasco City Council designates March 16th, 2020 as census proclamation day and be it further resolved that this body enthusiastically endorses census proclamation day encourages our community to engage in outreach regarding the 2020 census. So thank you very much and looking forward to hoping the people do what they need to do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is visitors other than agenda items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectations of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who can who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor and those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize your comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. So with that said, is there anybody in this spread out audience that would like to have a word tonight? Mr. Baumann, would you like to state your name and for the record, please?
Good evening, I'm Stephen Baumann. I live here in Pasco. I wanted to read a statement that I wrote this afternoon. Dear Pasco City Council and staff and the leadership of our community and the state and our nation, you have each been on my mind over the last several days as our country has found itself in this season of uncertainty. We're in need of steady leadership and wisdom to navigate the path ahead that is uncharted and unknown. I pray for wisdom, calm, and a peace that passes all understanding for each of you, especially Saul for you and Dave as the main two voices in our city at this trying time. I pray for your calm and wisdom as you lead our city and for each of you others as you do this. A lot of people are shaken and pray for that for each of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. Appreciate your thoughts and I just want to make a small note of announcement that I will be generating an announcement for the city and kind of just giving an update of where we're at and what we've done, but a lot of that will come a little bit with more information that you'll be provided tonight. So thank you very much for that.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, John Funfar, City Communications Program Manager. We are encouraging people to submit comments and questions online via our Facebook feed or emailing to see me answer. Unfortunately, we can't answer those in real time, but we can certainly get back to them as soon as possible. So for the near future, it looks like that's how we're kind of encouraging people to submit comments, so.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Yes, thank you for that and encouraging people to provide comments to Facebook and it'll be getting to us through John Funfar with his expertise that he has for us here. If there's nobody else, we'll move right along. Verbal reports from council members. Anybody have anything they'd like to report? Mr. Milm.
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, I did attend the morning meeting where we had the city staff and different business leaders and talking about questions and concerns they had for the city and I thought it was well attended. I was amazed on how many people in the city staff were there, but it was real good discussion and look forward to talking about some of those ideas when we eventually get to meet on our city council retreat.
Thank you, Mr. Milm. If there's nobody else, we'd like to go to the next item which is the COVID-19 response and update by Mr. Dave Zabel.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Mayor, you correctly observed the separation in the council chambers tonight and it's a little bit different for all of us. Matter of fact, I may get a sore neck by the time of the night's over, but this is counter to what we strive for in government is this kind of separation and you know what we try to do is access and transparency and openness and it's kind of sad to see this and it's sad we're in a time that we're in right now that goes so much against our natural tendencies, but this is what happens when things come down to maybe life or death for something. And what we do now is going to impact what happens later on. And so council member Roach, you know, council member Maloney, I talked to them today. Mayor Martinez and I have been in quite a bit of contact. Staff's been working very diligently and we all recognize that we need to be setting the example and we need to be doing everything we can to make people safe and not take any unnecessary risk. You can tell it was a little bit difficult. I apologize for that. It's an unnatural thing to be standing here looking at a room like this. With that, it's not business as usual, obviously, and it's not something we can fit into our regular duties. We did a little bit of that last week, week before last, less last week, none this week so far, all our day for most of the people you see in this room and most of our staff has been dedicated to responding to this incident, planning for it and preparing for it, understanding that good chunks of our workforce may be out for extended periods of time, understanding that the same is true with a lot of our businesses, a lot of our residents are going to be having some difficulty through this time and we're trying to plan accordingly. City's response to the COVID-19 outbreak has ramped up significantly over the past week and you know, that's important to the folks that live here because city provides a lot of, a lot of services, you know, some of which we don't think about on an annual or on daily basis. Certainly we want police fire an ambulance to come when 911, when we dial 911. We expect our water faucet to generate clean, safe water as soon as we hit the tap. We expect water that we send away from our home to be treated before we, before we send it into the Columbia River. And so those are some of the essential services. There's a lot of services where we are looking at probably having to do reductions because of the reductions we're going to have in resources and staff to put to those because we're going to have to shift them other places. And that's part of our planning effort. We're going to talk to you about tonight, right down to the configuration of this room. We have been fortunate in that we've had some time to see this coming, which is why we've been working on it a few weeks and we've had a chance to kind of ramp into it. It's accelerating very rapidly, obviously, the tasks at hand, but we did have some time to phase out of some of the things we're in. You just can't shut government down, but I think it's useful for people to know that most of our efforts are going to be geared towards this and to really cutting down and maintaining the absolute essentials that people count on for, for safety and health and so forth. Senior staff, we've been working diligently on the issue and we've put in place a structure through our continuity of operations plan. Tonight, we're going to go through a number of items and I apologize, I had two different time, we're going to go through a number of items. We have some folks from Franklin County Department of Emergency Management we're going to speak to on the phone here in a few minutes. Excuse me, Franklin County BEM, our executive director is setting an example and he is very sick and he's actually unavailable tonight, but we do have some folks from Benton Franklin Health District is going to be here tonight. Chief Gere is going to go over our continuity of operations plan and that's a plan we've been working on thankfully, I can tell you, for several months. It's not something we just started working on. It's something we started from scratch several months ago and, you know, we had the opportunity before any of this started late last year and early this year to go through some live simulations that really drove home the message that we had work to do and we've been doing that work. And so I think we're in, we're in pretty good shape from a response standpoint right now. We're going to talk a little bit about the city's emergency powers provision and its Pasco municipal code. City Attorney is going to share his views on that as well as some thoughts on memorandum he's prepared for you legislative preparedness and actions. We're going to also review the governor's proclamations. Those have evolved, obviously, last Friday at the time of this, the writing of the agenda report, governor had, had extended his ban on schools, school closures to statewide and then over the weekend, that's lessened our ability to host meetings of 50 or more, which again is part of what we're seeing here and the social distancing and those things, you know, all in an effort to protect folks. And then council's going to have a lot of actions, a lot of decisions to consider over the coming months as well. So we anticipate a lot of discussion tonight and invite that from council and members of the public. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Gere, or excuse me, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Benton Franklin folks. I'm not sure. Chief, did you want to introduce? So the chief's been very, very involved. Matter of fact, we have one of our folks embedded with Benton Franklin from a PIO standpoint at this point in time.
Well, we do have Rick Edwards, who's the incident commander from the Health Department on the phone and Rick Dawson, who is in charge of environmental health for Benton Franklin Health District. And we have him here in case there was some specific questions council might have from a health district standpoint. As this is a health emergency, they, they have the jurisdiction and they're in charge of that right now. So Rick, I don't, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, Bob. Very good.
Okay. Is there something you wanted to lead off with before we went to questions?
Sure, I'll be glad to do that. As you know, the Health Department, we started monitoring the situation as it was occurring in China and then as patients started popping up around the world and then of course in Western Washington. And so we actually started some of our planning at that time, knowing that this was coming to the United States. When the first patient in Western Washington was diagnosed shortly after that, that we activated our emergency operation center and that was 43 days ago and we've been working under the incident command system since that time. The largest part of our response right now is the public information and gathering that information, looking at it and then sending it out, disseminating to our partners to make sure that not only our partners, but the citizens in Benton Franklin are aware and receive guidance on this new novel coronavirus that's in our area. As you know, we do not have any positive cases in Benton or Franklin. We expect to see some and it's basically it's when, not if, because we know they're here around us. So our, our response continues. We're in it for the whole haul. We're looking at several months or longer to respond to this. So we're here, we're ready and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that and thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate your time and willingness to get on and answer some questions. I do have one that I would like to get your concurrence on. It seems as, as we're in the public, the public may, may think that there's an overreaction of the whole situation, but my understanding is, is that when we are, seem to be overreacting, we're, we're just trying to jump ahead of it, whereas when, if we were just to be, just active when, when it happens, we're kind of behind the eight ball. What do you think, what would be your opinion, what we could say to the public as far as this, all these different requirements that are being required of us for the protection of our citizens?
Well, first of all, I recognize that it is very scary for everybody. This, this new novel coronavirus is something new and there are, I think, when they're reporting the deaths, I think a lot of people focus on that. You can catch this virus faster than you can the normal influenza or flu and the signs and symptoms mimic each other. We're in flu season and a lot of times folks may have those signs and symptoms and they think they have the COVID-19. I don't blame them. I probably would be the same way, but my message is really to not panic. If you remain calm, the stores are going to remain open. You know, we've seen that the shelves are emptying of lots of goods, toilet paper, anything that you can think of, but the stores are going to remain open and those supplies will be there. The medical care is here. There are some issues that I think we identified Friday when we did our, our media event and we know that testing is on everybody's mind to be tested and have that sense of relief that they tested negative, but getting to those tests is pretty hard. It's because there are not enough of the testing media that's out there for everybody to get tested now. In the future, that will be taken care of because they stepped up production and they'll start stepping up additional deliveries and supplies. The big thing remains.
Excuse me, may I ask a question about the testing? This is council member Roach. What is the testing capacity right now in the state of Washington? How many tests are we running a day?
As I know, there are a multitude of testing availabilities. In the state of Washington, the state public health lab is capable of doing some tests. The University of Washington is capable of doing well over 1,000 tests a day. LabCorp, which is a private laboratory, doesn't necessarily do tests in the state of Washington, but they are offering testing to our residents and do many, many more than that. So it's very difficult for us to actually ascertain what the testing capacity is. The biggest problem we're having now locally is having enough supplies to collect those tests.
And, you know, so physicians are hesitant at times to test people who may not be severely ill. We're not seeing as many tests as we would like. We're all working diligently trying to improve the availability of the supplies to do testing in this community.
Thank you.
Rick, and Rick, when you guys talk, could you identify which one is answering?
That, that last answer was from Rick Dawson.
Thanks. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so much for, for giving us a little perspective on, on some of this. I think we've all read, I, I know I've spent way more time than I wish I had reading up and trying to research and discern what information's valuable here. Earlier, you'd said that, that you can see this lasting for months, and I've seen some indications from, from, depending on the person, that some people think that it may last over a year. Given that, I know we're taking some very aggressive measures right now, and they feel very prudent, given the impact we're seeing to other countries. Could you speak at all to how we can, what sort of sustained state we can be in as a, as a community and as we, as we try to, to, well, I guess flatten the curve to, to really reduce the peak of the incidences here?
Okay, you're breaking up just a little bit. This is Rick Edwards. The, and I think you were asking what measures we can take now and, and in the long run? Is that correct?
So we, we know we're taking a lot of extraordinary measures right now. However, when we're looking at the long term of how long this incident may last, which as, as you indicated, could be months, some have indicated that it could be over a year. What sort of sustained measures can we take? Or what's coming in the future that could, potentially coming in the future that could help us mitigate this better than, than, with less impact to the community?
I, I think during the opening of the city council meeting this, this evening, you mentioned that the seating and the new norms that we have to follow, the, these are going to continue throughout. If it's six months, if it's a year, eighteen months, whatever it is, that's going to be the new norm, washing your hands frequently, avoiding close contact, the social distance between folks, just like you see in, in your council chambers. So these are things that are going to continue for a long time. They're proven methods that we can take and continue to take that will avoid or lessen the chance of contracting this virus. And, and hopefully, they did the first test of a potential vaccination today, and that's going to take a long time, months if not years, before we do have a vaccine. Hopefully, that if they can get it online sooner, then, you know, we have a method to get that to the public as quickly as possible or to, and through our providers and hospitals. So the new norm, just what you see, wash your hands, avoid close contact, enhance cleaning, things like that. So unfortunately, that's it for a while, but it's easy measures all of us can take.
This is, this is Rick Dawson. Some of the, some of the more stringent things you see happening now are trying to slow the curve because not necessarily stop all of us from, from, from getting ill, because eventually, many of us will be infected with this virus. We just don't need or are able to handle all of us being sick at the same time. So the measures that are being taken now are trying to slow that steep rise in the number of cases that we're seeing in the state of Washington.
Rick Dawson, this is Darah Roach. I wanted to ask you a question about that exactly. And with our hospitals and our medical staff, staff, what is, what is the plan for when our local hospitals do reach capacity? And what is the plan if medical staff are overwhelmed? When do we, how do we tap into volunteers that are retired or, you know, maybe C C N W S U nursing students? Can you talk about that a little bit, please?
A little bit. I mean, we have the ability and plans and agreements to access the national, the national stockpile. Oftentimes, when we have events or events are occurring in many places where you have a hurricane or something like that, those, those resources are utilized and you can often bring people in from other areas. We are working with a couple of agencies to try and develop volunteers through like the emergency, our emergency management partners. As, you know, as needed, we do also know that we have a, a number of school nurses that are currently not working that we may be able to access as well. The goal of, you know, the actions being taken now is hoping that we do not have to take those actions because we don't overwhelm the health system by taking, you know, basically some, some pretty severe social distancing actions at this point.
This is Rick Edwards. I'll, I'll add to that, that starting back in two thousand and three, that the hospitals and public health, emergency management clinics all formed a coalition, and they developed emergency plans starting back then. Each agency has their own plans, and they were developed around a pandemic, anthrax, other types of things that would have mass surge of patients. These plans were developed and they've been tested over the years, not only in, in exercises, but also in real-world events. And every hospital has this, it's in their toolkit to use, and as things start to progress, they see a number of patients coming, they can take the steps to, within their facility, increase beds, also what we call an alternate care facility they can actually create within their facility or outside their facility, triaging areas for folks that are coming in. Again, a lot of the care for these folks is to stay home and, and recover, almost like the flu. And so instead of inundating the hospitals, they have plans in place to take care of those mass surges of folks coming in.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Serrano.
Thank you. Gentlemen from the Health District or the Emergency Services, what can we as a city council do to assist you? Aside from, I recognize we're going to be talking about our continuity of operations plan, and we've got very limited legal authorities. Is there anything that we can do to assist you, or is it best that we just kind of stay out of the way and let the professionals handle it?
So this is Rick Dawson. Things you can do is, is help us share information, help us share factual information to our citizens, linking to our website, sharing our social media posts. We are doing everything we can to supply current, factual, and up-to-date information to the citizens, and I'm pretty sure you wouldn't be surprised that we do not have a giant following as, as a health district because we, we tend to be invisible when we're doing our job, except when things like this happen.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you for that, and we will definitely do the best we can to keep our lines of communication open. I know the school district is working hard to keep their lines of communication open, and that, that's our mission here, is to not only keep up and provide our citizens with the, the essentials of city needs, but, but to help in any way we can. And I appreciate that very much. And on a positive note, and correct me if I'm mistaken, if, if I, if I read correctly, this is actually a record time that a vaccine has been created for a virus, sixty-five days? Is that, is that accurate?
That's pretty quick.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, the testing and the certification and the proof of effectiveness is really the key.
Yeah. So although it may take some time, I guess I'm just trying to find some positives and some light in all this. And, you know, at a minimum, I know that there's people around the country working hard to, to find these anecdotes and appreciate their, their assistance in this as well. So with that said, is there any other questions anybody would like to ask? Well, I sure appreciate you, you guys attending and being here available for questions. And again, we are committed to do the, the communication piece to help our citizens get the right information and the fastest up-to-date information that we can provide them. So once again, thank you very much for, for being with us tonight.
It, it was our pleasure, and we thank you for the opportunity to come in and talk with everybody and share our message as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Hey.
Mr. Gier?
Okay. Basically, we passed out our continuity of operations, continuity of government plan that we actually did start, as Mr. Zabel said, about eight months ago. But you can imagine, there was quite a bit of eye-rolling when we were making them do practice drills at, at management team meetings and going through some different scenarios, like a flu scenario or a derailment scenario that caused the evacuation to City Hall. And we went through three or four different little exercises. But I will say that this week, it's, appears to have gotten a lot more serious about going through the exercise with us. So basically, this has not been adopted by council. It'll be, hopefully be adopted by council by resolution next week, after council's had a chance to review the plan. Just for general information, I put kind of a little agenda in front of you. The first part of the plan is adoption, records revision, distribution, authorities. One of the things you'll see, the next part of the plan, which starts on page twelve, is the hazard risk analysis. And you won't see pandemic in our hazard risk analysis because we don't have jurisdictional authority to take action out in the field on a pandemic exercise. Only the Health Department has that. The, the hazards that we identify here would be ones that we would also have response jurisdiction to mitigate the, the event, like an earthquake. We're going to have incident management responsibility in the field as well as keeping government going within the city. So we don't list pandemic. It's in the Health Department plan. The closest thing you'd find would be a hazardous materials release that, that could include a biological weapon. Mr. Mahoney's got the, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Mayor. Chief Gier, just to follow up on that, I understand that there are other agencies that are involved in spearheading the, the community response, but in terms of internal, the way we manage teleworking and other operations, I am, I'll be honest, I'm kind of shocked to hear you say that because I know that, 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 that the staff has done so much to take care of it.
We have lots of stuff on how we do that. I'm just, I'm just specifically addressing the hazard risk analysis. The hazard analysis portion is, only pertains to things that we'd have jurisdictional authority to respond to. Once we get past that and get into the organization of the continuity of operation and, and continuity of government, then yes, we're, we're going to execute internally the same, regardless of the pandemic versus an eruption or an earthquake.
Thank you. My apologies for my misunderstanding.
No, that's okay. But I, we, I know that question would come up, why isn't pandemic in there? And, yeah, I, I understand. So in the pandemic, our responsibilities really turn inward to dealing with the city. Again, if we'd had that earthquake, I probably wouldn't have as much time to give to Mr. Zabel to help internal continuity of government because I'd be responding to building collapses and gas line breaks and other things out in the field. So that, fortunately, in this one, I have an opportunity to spend a lot of time. So you really, your hazard risk analysis starts on page twelve. Page forty-seven of the document is really where you get into continuity of operations and continuity of government, both the management teams and the duties and tasks associated with that. So forty-seven really through fifty-two kind of describes what we're doing, what kind of organizations we're building. For council's information, we have a policy group established, and under the policy group, we have an operations branch, and we have a facilities branch, and under those branches are specific task groups, IS task group, facilities task groups, public safety task groups, court, court operations task group. So we have numerous groups working on different projects throughout the city. Did you have a question? Okay. Again, annex those. Then when you get back after page sixty, you get into appendices and the annexes, which basically talk about what each specific department feels they need to continue to operate as our staffing and our capability goes down within the city. The staffing is really the big issue, and I, I, I don't know that it's going to be loss of staff to illness as much as it's going to be loss of staff to the clothing of the schools and the childcare needs that are going to come up. That's probably my number one concern with staff, at least right now in the short term. So that kind of takes you through the continuity of operations plan. Mr. Zabel's going to talk a lot more about different parts of it, but trust to say that I think we're, I think as an emergency response person for about forty-seven years, I think we're in pretty good shape in the city right now in terms of keeping the doors open, making the critical decisions that range from everything from what's the minimum staffing of, of fire stations are going to be in the city to what do we do with people who have no sick leave and get sick? And all, all that kind of stuff is, is going through us and being worked on and coming out to the employees and, and the working groups. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions with that.
Well, if, I don't see any lights turning on, but I just want to say thank you. I know there's been a, quite a task to get this done and get the guys trained and, and going through this, this exercise, and sure appreciate all the effort that goes into it, and we're looking forward to it. And by you saying what you just said, it brings us a lot of relief. It brings us a lot of hope and, 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 and just proud of, of what you guys have done so far to be this far ahead of the game at this point. And again, we don't know what the future has to hold for us, but with all the different obstacles that may come our way, we're going to do the best we can and appreciate your leadership in this, in this area. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gier.
Mr. Zabel?
So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to save my comments about the COOP plan for a few minutes and maybe bring up our city attorney to talk about the issues. He's here to discuss tonight, the emergency powers, council, or legislative preparedness, those type of things. And then I have, I'll, I'll put the COOP plan comments kind of underneath the imminent or pending actions of the council.
Good evening, excuse me, Eric Ferguson, City Attorney, Co. Ferguson Law. So there's obviously a lot going on, a lot of statutes that, not surprisingly, we don't exactly keep on the top of the stack. We don't use them that often, so it's taken a little bit of time to really dig down and gin up some of these things because there's been a lot going on. Excuse me, I did want to talk a little bit about the, our local emergency powers, and then I won't, I'll do my best to not drag you through a law clinic on each of these, but we'll try to keep it as brief as possible. But we'll do a, a quick overview of the emergency powers locally, then we'll talk a little bit about some of the other concerns that kind of generally for council. And then we'll talk finally about some of the proclamations from the governor. So with that being said, the first thing with regard to local emergency powers, those are under PMC two fifty-five, and essentially what that says is that the mayor has the ability to proclaim an emergency, and then that, under several different provisions. The provision that we are currently under would be one C, which would be any emergency or disaster is defined by thirty-eight fifty-two ten, which would include a public health emergency. So based on that, the foundational requirements for the mayor to be able to declare or proclaim a state or a civil emergency would be there for that, and the mayor has done so and has to be able to make that proclamation and then do a few things pretty quickly, first of which is to get a copy of that to the city clerk so the public can take a look at that as well as then at the next meeting, regular or special meeting, get that to council, which is why it's on this evening, but not listed. The mayor was able to sign that just earlier today. So we're, we're attempting to comply with that, all those provisions. It does give the mayor the ability to do some things that we are required normally to do with regard to local bidding laws, to be able to suspend some of those requirements. There are still some specific contract provisions, things that have to be followed up on, but it does really help us focus on limiting the time required to be able to do some of these things that otherwise would take a long time to be able to go through the process. I mean, and when I say long time, I mean in terms of, we're talking hours versus weeks, so, which is critical. So with that, we do have, one of the things I did want to kind of highlight with regard to the ability of the mayor to be able to make such orders, the very last thing in our, in our list of, of items that I, I won't drag you through, but at the very end is such other orders as are immediately necessary for the protection of life and property. So that's, that's, that's a pretty broad power, but at the same time, these are extraordinary times that require immediate decisions that then the council obviously has a right to make sure that they're being made aware of and, and followed up on and ratified. So we're kind of in a, in a little bit of different mode now. We're going from doing thing or asking, going through a bunch of processes to then get approval to now sometimes things have to be done and then be ratified after the fact, and obviously, the council still maintains that legislative authority to, to be able to do that. So with that, we'll talk just a little bit more. I wanted to bring up some of the things that could be questions. We'll talk a little bit more about some of these because they're on your agenda. The first one is working remotely. You might see that handout that we got to you. These things have been flying around, and we'd hope to be able to get this to you sooner. But just looking at the handout, the first item on there, working remotely, is really one of the things that we're going to talk about later on, on the agenda. We have a policy. I think the thing I just really want to make clear about that is that under Open Public Meetings Act, it's, it's clear that you are clearly allowed to attend meetings remotely. That is different than granting a right to attend meetings remotely. So essentially, what that means is it's up to the council's own authority to decide how they want to regulate that. So essentially, what it means is that there is no violation of an open public meeting by, by your attendance being remote. Then obviously, if we have to cancel or reschedule meetings, there's a process for that. The council can obviously do that, but also the city clerk could adjourn the meeting, and there's some very specific things that Madam Clerk would have to do to, to make sure that notice is given to the public. Proclaiming an emergency, we just talked a little bit about that, and we'll talk a little bit more later on in the meeting. And then with regard to the actual local powers that are available under, under that provision. And then finally, the non-interference, just because obviously we're in a state of emergency, we also have to make sure that the chain of command is clear and that direction still has to go, has to stay. and that direction still has to go, has to stay inside the executive branch for executive branch employee, which are all employees. Council obviously still has oversight and the ability to manage policy and that's really what their role is. But just wanted to also remind everybody that that is governed by the statute for the city manager to be able to give those directions and, and anything that you as council members would want to make sure that they're, that he's aware of, you, you can obviously certainly do that. So that's, that's definitely within your purview. Now I will try to, as best I can, give you a little update on the proclamations from the governor's office. To date, there have been ten proclamations. I will not take you through each one of those. I will give you a quick highlight. The first of which was twenty oh five, which was the actual declaration or proclamation of an emergency that really kicked in a lot of basic things with regard to emergency management, National Guard, those types of things. Two thousand or twenty oh six really limited nursing home visitation and, and dealt with that issue. Twenty oh seven was the first time that the mayor, or excuse me, that the governor had done a restriction on gatherings of two hundred and fifty plus people, but that was only limited King Pierce and Snohomish Counties. And the reason why I'm kind of dragging you through these is you'll see there's a, there's a, there's a constant kind of focusing in on what's going on here. The, the, the key factor with the, the proclamation twenty oh seven was that it really defined what gathering was. There was some really kind of difficult questions to understand. What does this mean about gathering? And twenty oh seven really defined it, gatherings of two hundred and fifty people. This was at the time two hundred and fifty. Now we're clearly down below that. For more or more for social, spiritual and recreational activities, including but not limited to community, civic, public, leisure, faith-based or sporting events, parades, concerts, festivals, conventions, fundraisers and similar activities. So that is extremely broad with regard to two hundred and fifty people. I think that pretty much covers any situation. So as that went on, that, that got further reduced as the proclamations kept going. Obviously there was the closing of schools in King Pierce and Snohomish. Then there was the closing of schools statewide until April twenty-fourth for statewide. Then there was some additional language added related to adult and family homes restrictions and visitations. And then today was really the, they, they subsequently limited statewide limits on gatherings on, for two hundred, or yeah, for two hundred and fifty people that went statewide. And then finally today is when it really got narrowed down. There were three new orders that were, or proclamations that were issued. The, the one that is probably the most profound or, I guess intense, for lack of a better word, is the statewide limits on food and beverage and areas of congregation. I do want to explain to you just a little bit about what that may include because it is extremely expansive. It deals with the definition of proclaim to hereby proclaim state of emergency continues to exist in all counties and the proclamation is amended to prohibit a number of people from gathering, any number of people from gathering in any public venue in which people congregate for the purpose, or excuse me, for purposes of public entertainment, recreation, food and beverage service, theater, bowling, fitness and other similar activities to include all public venues in which serving provision or consumption of prepared food and beverages occurs at a table bar or for consumption therein. So that is very, very broad. And so that's why we're in the situation that we're in with regard to restaurants, bars, other places. I did want to also say that it looks like it, it is kind of difficult. You can tell that they were really trying to be as, as all encompassing as they could be because later on in the, in the proclamation, they add barber shops, nail salons, tattoo parlors, pool halls, other similar venues. So it's, it's pretty broad. So from that standpoint. And then finally, the last one that really would affect us would be the limitations on statewide gatherings of fifty or more. So we're, we're down now to where you cannot have fifty or more people in, in one location. If you are below fifty, you still have to adhere to the same requirements with regard to the social distancing policies that were required. The last thing I'll mention about these is that all of them, except the original declaration of emergency, include reference to RCW forty-three oh six two twenty per N five, which is, makes the violation of any of these proclamations a gross misdemeanor. So that's a violation of a state law. Local law enforcement can obviously enforce that. Any peace officer has to find in the RCW can enforce that. Obviously that's not the goal. The goal is to get people to comply, but the city obviously does have police authority to enforce these, these orders. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questioned a very thorough report, Mr. Ferguson. It's really sad to hear a lot of that, but the reality is here. And we need to do our best to try to, to maintain and, and follow these directions for the, for the good of our community and, and our state. Appreciate, appreciate that report. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Our pleasure. So with that, I did want to talk a little bit about our current structure for our COOP, our Continuity Operations Group. And as Chief mentioned, the, the, the plan itself is, the important part about it is the structure that it creates. And so right now we have a policy group and subgroups put together that include legal communications. And communications is that piece where we're not only working internally, but externally with the public, trying to get information out. Certainly not necessarily creating our own information except about our agency. And what services, for instance, the rec program. You saw the press release on the rec programs being suspended temporarily. There may be other announcements that come out from city staff about that. And then we're also trying to help the Benton Franklin Health District and others get the word out on other best practices and information about the COVID virus itself. We're being careful not to paraphrase or anyway change that message and really just trying to send them to those reliable resources out there. We have an, we have an operations and a facilities branch that, that the, some of the functions split off into Director Sigdel and Deputy Chief Dunbar lead up, Director Sigdel leads and Deputy Chief Dunbar is one level down. Operations side, facility side, Director Ratkai and Director White is his, his backup. And we're, one of the, one of the things we've done in this is try to identify, and you'll see it in our plan, two and potentially three layers deep because we have to plan for the contingency that somebody is not going to be able to answer the call. And we need to have a backup that's ready to go, that understands what's been going on, those type of things. And so you'll see that throughout. We've also done that at the department level, not just, not just with this team, but also with the department, each of the departments themselves because we still have, we still have the business of the city to do. We, we may be changing some of our duties. There may be some things we add related to the virus and how we do it. There may be some things we have to do differently or do less of. You know, we may not process an application as quickly or, or we may not fill a pothole as quickly, but we cannot change how quickly we respond to a nine-one-one call. We cannot change the quality of the water that we provide our citizens, those type of things. And so again, as I mentioned earlier, we'll be, we'll be shifting some of the focuses. We have IS Task Force and they, we are very much working with that task force. They are very focused on, for instance, one of the things, work from home. We have some employees that might, that can work from home. We have a limited amount of resources from iPads. We've just recently, I think, purchased from where in the order between thirty-five and forty of them, plus the ones we had, which give us a lot more flexibility than we had just two weeks ago. But working on those policies and how to prioritize those. You know, we, we need to be careful that, because we do have some critical work coming. One, one piece of work that Director Sigdel likes to remind us of is the annual report. The annual report has a due date and it has to get done by that due date. So again, that's one of those pieces of business that has to be accomplished. We have people that need to work. On the other hand, we need to shift some resources in, in our accounting towards this incident because eventually we should be able to get reimbursed for a lot of our efforts here. And, and our record, record keeping is going to be very important, you know, for us to be successful and, and getting as much reimbursement as we can for the city as possible. Human resources, we're looking at, Chief alluded to a number of different personnel policies. Worked through an issue this week about co-pays on COVID testing. And I can't remember the other issue is associated with COVID, but, and the office visit associated with that testing. And our plan doesn't normally cover that and we had to make a decision by end of work today. We worked through that, looked at the potential financial impact, that committee did, and, and able to move that on. We have temporary lodging piece that we're looking at for folks that may not be able to go home if they're infected or if folks are infected at home. You know, we need to, we need to have a place for, for folks to be able to stay. Finance itself, public safety, municipal court, we've been working with them. You saw the judge's order earlier today suspending certain functions of the court for the time being to minimize the potential for, for contact. So those groups are cranking up, doing very good work and they're just really just hit, kind of hitting their stride. Essentially last, last Friday and this Monday, we've made a lot of progress. And some of the things for council to be thinking on as we come down the, the weeks to come. And one of them was you, we wound up having to put on your agenda today, late today. So if you don't have the emergency declaration on your gen- agenda, please refresh. But our, our, we anticipated late last week that you would be actually contemplating that this week and adopting it next week. And we had to move that up. And I will share with you that on a conference call with several other cities in the tri-cities area, the cities of Kennewick, Richland and West Richland are all going to be passing an emergency declaration tomorrow. And Franklin County did today. So folks are, you know, understanding we are definitely in an emergency. We have an adoption of the COOP next week. We'll be bringing that to you. We'll, we'll make a special meeting out of your regular workshop meeting so you can, you can take some action during that meeting. Number of events we're going to have to consider cancelling. I'd sent you a, an email that actually ten, twelve days ago when I sent that might have been a little shocking for you. Now it's not, you know. And I, I think we're all expecting some of those things are going to happen. Decision will be made on, by the DPDA on Cinco de Mayo, I believe, this coming Thursday. Remote city council meetings, we're going to talk about a policy for remote attendance, but we may wind up not having a city council meeting. As you heard from the attorney, excuse me, a, a city council meeting with city council members in attendance because again, it comes down to protecting what we need to protect so the city can do the business it needs to do to protect or to, to ultimately protect and serve the citizens we have. So we may get to a point where, where council makes a determination that it's better for you to report remotely for a meeting. We wouldn't need as wide a camera lens, but the test we, or the test, the obligation we'd have is the public, we'd have, we have to have a room that would be open to the public. So this is the one we'd have open because we're trying to minimize number of rooms that we have. Again, because we have limited resources, we can't clean a room every time somebody uses it. And so we would have this room open, we would have visual, or excuse me, audio set up so that you could hear the public and the public could hear each of the council members. And that's, that's our obligation under Open Public Meetings Act. Did I get that right, Eric? Yes. So we, we may wind up in that scenario before too long. There may be other ways beyond listening through a speaker at your remote location to where we want to be able to receive input from the public. So we're going to be looking at the technology. You heard John talk a little bit about Facebook tonight, but there may be ways we can do that a little bit more interactive rather than just receive it and, and read it later and, and respond to it. Council long-range planning retreat, part of that email I sent you ten, ten, twelve days ago. This may not be the time to do long-range planning. We may want to put that off for a few weeks, maybe a month and focus on, use that time or part of that time to focus on the issue at hand. And so I'll be talking with each of you in the next day or two about that. Not too distant future, council will probably be considering budget ramifications as a result of this. Certainly there's going to be expenses incurred. You know, we weren't planning on thirty-five laptops. We were planning on twenty. You know, so we are going to have things be impacted. Also, we saw what's happened with Dow Jones and the S and P. That's what's going to happen to our sales tax. You know, as people are hunkered down and inside restaurants and bars, the places we actually, not we, I should say, the places where sales tax is generated are not open or available and people are reluctant to be out. Yeah, those, those are dollars that won't be generated for the coffers and that's something we're going to have to really look at as council and, and senior staff. And then I can't read my last note, I'm sorry. So, but they're, understanding there's a, there's a lot of stuff coming up. And, and council is going to have a more and more important role as the weeks, weeks go by. You do have, as the chief mentioned, an oversight role of what we are all doing. And you see the COOP chart on page forty-seven with the city council box on it. Not the best of graphics, but it does demonstrate a role to council, obviously, and you are all well aware of that. Oversees the, the entire thing. And so how that reporting works is, is a, is a council discretionary piece. And we're happy to provide continued updates like this. And I think it actually does well to be able to use our meetings to get the word out on these. But council may have a need for more intense dialogue. Happy to meet with any council member one-on-one or, or if we want to talk about a specific area, you can pull in a, a subject matter expert in that area as well. So with that, any questions from council?
Any questions from council? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Zabel. That's, that's a lot. And you know, I think one thing that really stands out to me is how seriously you take this. I can only imagine how much has been impacting your personal life trying to keep up with how the demands of this job, especially right now. So I, you know, I just want to express and my, my personal gratitude for, for all you're doing for us. That isn't necessarily something we get to or want to see all the time.
I appreciate that and I, I can say the same for pretty much every, every staff member that's working on this issue. Most of them work through the weekend, on and off, and some of them all weekend. So, but thank you.
So one of the questions I do have is, are you aware of any near-term legislative action either at the state or the federal level that looks like it might be providing cities and other agencies relief for some of this? Like you said, we're going to be hit by both additional expenses and, and our revenues are going to take a massive hit.
I have heard some proposals. I've heard proposals about unemployment. I've heard proposals that would help employees. I've heard that might be afflicted with coronavirus. I've heard proposals about, L and I, I've heard proposals about, I think a state sick leave type, but I, I've not, legislature is out of session, you know. So I'm, I'm not quite sure how that would even happen. Chief, have you heard any federal? So Chief, Chief's a little more tuned into the federal piece and this is kind of his wheelhouse. He's kind of.
The Stafford Act was approved a couple of days ago and the Stafford Act is the Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistant Act. Under federal law design, bring basically FEMA funding and reimbursement down to the state and local government level. And so that, that was a very important thing that happened here a few days ago. That also allows the state as an example to have access to federal incident management people that they, they didn't have access to before. And then I believe the Washington Legislature appropriated, I can't remember the amount of money, but they, they did an appropriation and the governor's talked about it. I'd have to look it up, but I, there's been both. I know that we're talking about assigning an incident management team. The Health Department had asked, has asked us to stand up one of our local incident management teams that we normally use on fires and assign them to the health, the health department because they've just asked for some help. And what I was told in the discussion with that is that FEMA is going to reimburse. And what I was told in the discussion with that is that FEMA is gonna reimburse seventy-five percent of the cost of that, and the state health will reimburse the fifty percent of the other twenty-five percent. So we're sitting at about twelve and a half that we're not sure who's gonna pay for. But that's, that's not the end of the world. So we're waiting for the, the order has to go to Olympia for that, get approved from Olympia, and then we're waiting for a reporting time and location for that team to, to move in and, and go into unified command with the Health Department.
Thanks so much, Chief. Mr. Zabel, just a few more things if you don't mind. So one of the things I see in this, and, and part of it's, you know, looking at, you know, looking at social media and seeing what's hitting people right now is, is the fact that we don't have a lot of people who are really sick in the community. So I know a lot of people are more worried about their pocketbooks than they are about their personal health at times. But one of the longest, the biggest long-term threats I, I fear is this is gonna be economic, not just for the city, but for the people in our community. Especially if this goes for months, or even as the, and the, the Health Department was indicating, could be months, six months, it could be a year, in which we have some extraordinary measures in place. We have a lot of people, as you indicated earlier, that rely on, that are the service industry, that are, are gonna be deeply affected. I, I would really like to understand what is within our authority as a city and that could help some of the relief from that burden. I know, for example, you know, we have, we know, we have the, the water system, so obviously, you know, providing water and what that looks like and how the dynamic is. I'd be really, I'd really appreciate it if staff could look into that, maybe help us understand what, what is within our purview to help provide some relief to those who really need it and are within both our legal and, our legal authority to consider.
It, it just so happens we have a team to look at that very thing under our COOP operations plant. So, and we, we had a discussion about that this morning, and so that's a product we can bring you next week.
Great, I'd really, I'd, I'd really appreciate that. The one other thing I could, I would ask is, when we start going through some of these, I'm familiar with conduct of operations plants, read, read a number of them, but I, I don't think everyone necessarily understands some of the details of how some of these things would work. Is there any chance you could talk just briefly about how, what it, what it means to say keep the water treatment plant operational? What, what sort of, what does that look like? Is it making sure that we simply have people staffed twenty-four hours? Is it, what, what is?
Yeah. I, I can certainly do some of that, and a number of our department heads certainly could as well. First of all, you know, it takes a lot of skill for a lot of these positions. You know, water treatment plant, everyone that works out there has to have a certain level of certification to even run that equipment to, you know, you're putting chemicals and, and running processes that people are drinking. And so it's, it's a very highly regulated and very technical area. And to keep that plant running, you know, requires pretty much the staff we have. And, and there aren't a lot of operators that have the level of certification required for our plant. You know, that, that's, that's the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, very similar. Considerable amount of testing goes into that. Our water quality that comes out of the end of the pipe at the wastewater treatment plant, less than ten milligrams per liter of total suspended solids, total BOD, which is the strength of it, of the sewage. And we've obviously had an award-winning plant for, I think, the last seven or eight years. We've had a, a perfect compliance with our National Discharge Elimination, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. That is a twenty-four-hour operation, you know, you don't turn sewer on and off. There's no place to store it, so it's, you know, sewage flows through those things. Water flows through our pipes twenty-four, twenty-four, seven. You know, or, or even, even just the hydraulics and, and mechanics associated with managing the reservoirs and making sure we're maintaining the fire pressure we need to and, and those systems and the booster pumps and, and the things that go along with that. We have processed water reuse, not as critical from an environmental standpoint, but hugely critical from an economic standpoint. And that, that facility probably supports between fifteen hundred and two thousand jobs, depending on the time of year. Police and fire, I, I think everybody kind of understands it, what it takes to be a police officer, firefighter, or paramedic, and the high level of skill that takes for, for those folks to be able to respond in the way they do, the amount of training that goes into that, beyond just the initial training. You know, police and fire train, you know, hundreds-plus hours a year to maintain the level of professionalism that, that they do. And then, you know, certainly, you know, we, we have some very top-notch financial folks, our HR staff. So all these jobs are extremely specialized for what they do, and trying to keep that workforce as best we can healthy, so they can continue serving, and not wearing them out, you know, the ones, the ones that don't sick. We don't, don't get COVID- nineteen, we don't want to have them exhausted either, you know. So watching that, making sure they're taken care of, making sure that they're able to relax if they do need to be off, and whether it's quarantined or sick, or taking care of a family member, what have you, and then being able to get them back here safely and, and, and back to productively serving our citizens. That's part of what the, our continuity operations plan is all about, and, and one of the things we're focused on.
I appreciate that, Dave, thank you for breaking that out for us.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. So ladies, any more questions from the council? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this is, everything that's been brought up in the last forty minutes is just a summary of all the different things that are, that are having to happen for us to maintain a safe environment and get ready for what, what we could encounter. As you can see, the passion of our city manager and the staff, these guys have had probably some sleepless nights, working hard, and I just want to tell you, it's go time. These are, these are the, these are the moments when we're gonna be defined as citizens. So when you guys see a police officer, when you see a, a fireman, a nurse, somebody that works in our water department, somebody who's cleaning the streets, a thank you goes a long way. And one more thing, when you see a citizen who probably is not doing something very correctly on the street, it's not time to be causing a commotion, it's time to help that person. And these are the times when we show our true colors. And, you know, again, they could go on for one month, two months, they could go on for six months to a year. But I know that this city hasn't, hasn't come to where it's at, just because we're weak and because we don't have what, what it takes to make a city, to make a, a very beautiful and a great place to live. So with that said, when you see an emergency responder, say thank you and get out of his way. I, I actually ran into one the other night, actually Sunday night, last night, at the, at the Maverick, and I just couldn't thank him enough. And the minute he fueled up his fire truck, they were, they were on the call. And so our prayers go out to them. And we gotta work hard to, to fight the fight and to do what we gotta do to, to move forward and get past this. And we're gonna be successful like, like us Americans always are. So I want to just finish with that, and thank you once again for all the presentations. And we can move forward and maybe do a little city business here, unless everybody, do you guys like to have a, a break? Why don't, why don't we go have a five-minute break, or ten-minute? We'll be back at eight-thirty, and we can finish our, the rest of our city business. Thank you.
Okay, we will bring this meeting back to order and complete our city business. And we are on item number seven of our agenda in which is hearing and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. And we are going to talk about a street vacation. Vacating portions of street and alleys in Washington addition. Mr. White, would you like to take some comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is a proposed vacation of a series of rights-of-way that are located east of Heritage Boulevard between A Street and Lewis Street. And at this point, staff would recommend the council continue the public hearing until the June 1st date. Although normally rights-of-way that are approaching one hundred and twenty, one hundred and thirty years old are pretty much pro forma vacation process. This one has a lot of moving parts. The owners of the plot of Tierra Vita just to the east are finishing their last phase, and they may need a portion of the Helen Street right-of-way that would be premature at this point to vacate. In addition, we do not have yet a complete preliminary plat application from the applicant for this vacation, which are one and the same, by the way. So there may be a need for future north-south streets somewhere within these existing rights-of-way. We do believe, though, that the June 1st date will give the applicant a chance to work with Tierra Vita and at the same time finish up his preliminary plat submittal process. So we know a little bit more of what's expected and what we're expected to provide. So staff would recommend, Mr. Mayor, that council open the hearing and continue it to June 1st.
Okay. Is there any questions? If there's no questions, I'll accept a motion and open the hearing based on the staff's recommendation. Ms. Rojas?
I move to continue the public hearing set in ordinance with resolution number three nine four one to June 1st, 2020 at 7:00 PM concerning the vacation of roads and alleys within the plot of Washington addition.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Serrano. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes unanimously, and the hearing is open. Okay, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Eight eight donation policy for acceptance of community donations. Rija? We kind of discussed this last week, but is there any further comments?
Yes, evening, Mayor and Council. The only change that you will see in today's packet is the frequency of reporting as we discussed last week. So we've changed that from annual to monthly basis.
Okay. Any questions by the council? If not, we want to entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number four four eight six authorizing acceptance of donations made to the city of Pasco for any public purpose and further authorized publication by summary only.
There's a motion. Do I hear a second? Mister, second by Mr. Mill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Again, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Rija. All right, and this one here was one that we were alluding to a little bit earlier. This is the resolution ratifying an emergency proclamation. Mr. Ferguson?
Great. So this is the formal action that council would need to take to ratify the declaration previously signed by the mayor under PMC two fifty-five.
Is there any questions by the council? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And this is something I brought up last week. I didn't really see a good spot for the rest of the agenda, so if you don't mind, I'll bring it up here. I do believe there'd be some benefit in creating a subcommittee of the council to focus specifically on our legislative role within the COVID-19 response. So doing things such as helping gather, review the information, and provide comment before it comes from council so we can have a more rapid response out of the council, as well as helping with our messaging. After all, council's in a rather unique position of being really the representatives of the city and the people of the city. And I would think there's a benefit to having a small team of us be able to more nimbly respond to and provide recommendations. Again, not taking the, not necessarily specifically taking the action, but taking the recommendations.
Okay. Well, that's something that definitely the council can discuss, Mr. Serrano.
Oh, I'm not sure that I support that. I think, you know, we have a great staff here. I do think that the information that I've seen has been both timely, accurate, and adequate. And I'm not sure, one, that if we attempt to do this, we would somehow step into legislative bounds where we don't have authority. And two, I'm not, I'm just not sure that it would speed the process. So I don't, I'm not convinced of the value. I'm not totally opposed to it, but I'm not sure that I'm there yet.
Okay, Mr. Alvarado?
I think perhaps a different way of looking at it is having the ability with this proclamation to be able to call on additional meetings of city council. I don't know if that gives us any authority to, I know there's certain steps that need to be in place, but perhaps it might be something that the full council should be engaged in. And if it means we come in a few extra days of the week, then, you know, that's what we need to do for our citizens, and I think that that's what's needed based on perhaps recommendations from staff on if there's some legislative or some emergency funds that we need to allocate or things like that for us to kind of be on call for perhaps any kind of additional meetings. That'd be my recommendation, but again, I'm not sure.
Ms. Proffas?
Thank you, Mayor. I, my personal opinion on this is that, yes, I agree, we do have an excellent staff on top of this and ahead of it. And I would like to side with Mr. Maloney saying that, and Mr. Alvarado, that we should be involved. I do believe we should be involved to the extent of being in knowledge of what the processes are and where we stand. Of course, in hopes not to interfere with the work being done on the ground by our staff. But again, just like Mr. Alvarado said, to know what's going on and to be part of it and to make that last-minute decision if that needs to happen. Thank you.
Okay. Well, the way I believe it's been working is, is something that, hmm. Well, I don't have a problem with getting together. It would, I would have to say that you and I should probably be on that subcommittee due to the fact that, you know, the mayor, as a mayor, the mayor would make the proclamations and make the decisions, you know, based on other communications I've been having with Dave. I guess, you know, the decisions would be made if they had to be made immediately before, like, the subcommittee met. But I don't have a problem with getting together with, you know, maybe two people that are interested in just discussing it, seeing where we're at. I would hate to take some staff time away if you were thinking a staff member needed to be there with, you know, their already busy schedule. Or maybe we can just coordinate around whenever they do have maybe twenty, thirty minutes to spare. I'm not sure how that would look. But you have any comments on that, Mr. Zabel?
Give me my space. So, yeah, I think there, one of the things we've been discussing at our policy group is, because we're, as I shared with you, we're meeting first thing Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And so there might be an opportunity, say, on our Friday meeting where we're reporting out the week and doing some planning for the following week for a report out to, you know, if there were a council subcommittee, or we could do that at the council meeting the following Monday, or we could do both. So I think one advantage of, I mean, I guess some would see it as an advantage, some may not, is with the council subcommittee, you can probably have a little more one-on-one conversation without it being in such a formal setting with the policy group. Maybe providing input or getting information.
Okay.
So just throw that out there. That's, that would be a benefit. My plan would be we'll probably have an ongoing incident update at your Monday night meetings anyway. So all the council, it might be important for me and all the council to get the same information.
Yeah.
I'll just throw that out there.
Okay. Well, why don't we just give it a thought? Is it Zara? Zara, are you, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, did you have a question?
Um, no, I don't have a question about it right now.
Okay. So, you know, let's ponder it for a week, and then we'll come back next week and see how maybe we can form something to see, just think about it one more week and see where we need to be to maybe gather thoughts on exactly what it is that would be beneficial. Because I'm in agreement that, you know, not to take any staff time away, but again, every Monday, assuming that we can still meet, that everybody would get the same information and we can make the comments in public. I just don't know if it would have much value, but I'm definitely willing to entertain the council and get more information. So maybe we can wait a week and see how this plays out for one week and see if it's gonna, because the story is things might get worse before they get better. So, but I definitely do think we need the perspective of the whole council to ensure that the city, that we represent the city the way we need to and provide them perhaps the information that they're looking for to get as well that is maybe even beyond policy that can better our community. So we'll bring it up next week and see what our thoughts are on that.
Mr. Martinez, just to elaborate a little further and respond a little bit to Mr. Serrano. As for instance, you and I talked, what, last night about this very topic? That allows you to talk with one other council member before creating a public meeting, and that's certainly something we want to avoid. So as we're diving into some of these things, this subcommittee like this would help make sure that we're not out of school with those so-called chain meetings and such. And so that's one of the concerns I have, that I think that a subcommittee could help focus on. And of course, it wouldn't be a legislative committee that would be making decisions outside of council, just rather providing a set of information and be able to do a little deeper dive on a couple matters that really taking, trying to do so in the council meetings. You've seen that that can be arduous and difficult for both staff and for the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. So let's see, where are we at? We're, any other questions for the council from Mr. Ferguson? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number three nine four six approving the ratification of the emergency proclamation signed by Mayor Martinez on March sixteen, 2020, proclaiming a civic emergency within the city of Pasco, Washington as a result of the spread of COVID-19 in Benton and Franklin Counties.
One second. There's been a motion and a second, but Mr. Alvarado? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
It passes unanimously, thank you. Moving right along to eight C, remote meeting participation policy. Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. So this is the formal adoption of the policy we mentioned earlier about how council may want to regulate itself with regard to attendance of meetings. This is our attempt to give council the ability to determine that. I do want to highlight a couple of things that we, we thought that the council would be interested in, but certainly that is, this is totally within your realm to decide how you want to regulate yourselves. The, a couple of things I wanted to point out was, you'll see in section three there, last sentence, remote attendance is, this is in the administrative order portion behind the resolution. Section three, remote attendance is intended to be an infrequently used alternative method of participation by council members and staff. We didn't think that council may be interested in doing this on a regular basis or consistent basis absent some other condition that would warrant it. Right below that, you'll see that we have some pretty broad exceptions when we think it would potentially warrant it. The first is a proclamation of emergency. The second is circumstances which make it impossible or inadvisable to physically appear, such as illness, inclement weather, and dangerous road conditions. So, but it is, based on this policy, it, there does, there is no preapproval to be able to attend remotely. Some policies require preapproval of other members. We went with the approach that council would be able to monitor that, and if they felt that someone was abusing that, then they could, they could take that up with their fellow council member, obviously in open session, and that would be something that they could determine whether it was actually being used infrequently or not. The other thing I wanted to kind of highlight was the thing mentioned before by Mr. Zabel, which was that the remote participant must be able to hear, be heard, and participate effectively in the meeting to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. So that's obviously working quite well with Ms. Roach, and I think. And so that's a, that's a pretty easy thing to accomplish. The last thing I'll mention is the reference to executive sessions, and that does obviously get a lot, lot tighter with regard to restrictions because there has to be confidence, the last sentence of that section, there has to be confidence in the security of such remote communications because obviously most of those, well, all those communications are privileged, either through attorney-client privilege or through the executive session privilege as well. So if you have any questions, we're happy to.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. I can't imagine anybody on this council, as passionate as you all are, whatever, abuse it or take advantage of it. I want to say that prior to this council, and I'm not sure if it was with Dave or Mr. Crutchfield, but this actually was brought up basically to ensure that we had a quorum in the event that we needed a quorum, and that was solely what it was for. And the dynamics were a lot different at that time, too. But I think this is important to have. We need to prepare amid this situation, the state we are in now. So, yeah, that's, those are my comments. Anybody else have any comments? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ferguson, just the one question I have here is, we talk about executive sessions. We talk about only when the Council Boarder Commission considers such participation to be necessary. So for us as a body to make that decision, we have to be in a public meeting to have decided that in some fashion. So how mechanically do we say, yes, you can attend by executive session? Are we going to do it during the executive session, right before the execution? I'm not sure how that would.
No, I believe that would work prior to. You would decide whether you felt confident that the participant, you were confident with them going into executive session remotely. And so, and that may depend on what the topic, that could be determined by the substance of the executive session. So, but that would take place prior.
Mechanically, how, like a week before?
No, 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 that would take place, I think you would be able to make that decision prior to entering executive session in your meeting.
I guess, well, let's see, is if possible, is there any way we can lessen that decision-making? Because making it as a body right before that, when someone's participating, like, as Ms. Roach is participating in this meeting right now, if we were to make a decision at the end of this meeting, right before go to executive session, to exclude or not exclude her? If there's any way we could predetermine that without a decision by the body, I would love to see that. But I guess we can talk about that more later.
And that's what's great about.
As a future revision.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, absolutely. We can look into that.
Okay. If there's no further comments, so we entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number three nine four four, creating a policy for council and in boards and commissions to meet remotely under certain conditions.
There's been a motion. And there's been a second by Mr. Maloney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We see next is the alley vacation, vacating east-west alley in Platte of Sunny Acres. Who would be, let's see here. Mr. White, do you have, would you like to come and make some comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just very briefly, this is a proposed vacation of the alley rights-of-way. Essentially, it's at Pasco Reynolds, the location at Twenty-Sixth and Court. And this just sets the hearing for the first council meeting in May. The, it's a little bit longer than normal for setting the hearing, but we are working with the applicant on a design of a future strip commercial operation in this, at this address, and we want to make sure, we don't want to be imprudent about vacating alley rights-of-way. There may be need for additional rights-of-way because the access may be difficult depending on the design that they're going to propose for this site.
Thank you. There's no questions by the council?
I move to approve resolution number three nine four five, setting seven PM Monday, May fourth, 2020, as a time and date to conduct a public hearing to consider vacating the east-to-west alley of Block One, Sunny Acres.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Serrano. Second by Mr. Serrano. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Uh, passes unanimously, thank you very much. Go on to section nine, unfinished business. Any business that uh, anybody want to discuss that on the agenda? We'll move on to new business. We have some new business, a bid award of.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mayor Martinez. I didn't get a chance during boards and committees to to tell you about where it'd been last week, and so I just wanted to update.
Okay.
Council that, uh, is that okay to do that right now?
Sure, sure.
Okay, uh, so I went to the Ben Franklin Transit Board Meeting as the alternate um, as it has been the topic of conversation everywhere. Um, we got an update about COVID nineteen, what's being done by the transit to ensure the health and safety of riders. Um, there's a lot of talk about Dyloride, um, especially because these uh the Dyloride users are the immunocompromised, uh, they make up a lot of that population, and so um, you know, they're not, there's a lack of supplies as far as sanitizers and wipes and um concern of cleanliness of public transportation. And so that was a difficult topic, but one of the positive note was that they had a city, tri-cities-wide competition over two hundred submissions for student art. Um, and so they gave out awards that evening, and that was, you know, that was the positive of the evening. Um, but that's about it. Uh, I think for that board meeting that I attended.
Yeah, you're talking about the the school district board meeting?
Well, I'm talking about the Ben Franklin Transit Board Meeting that I attended, but I did go to the emergency school board meeting on Friday night as well, and I can give you just an overview about that, because there were questions that came up um from just residents that that I thought were important. You know, one of the the first things from, you know, concerned parents was that uh, you know, how would childcare be provided for? Uh, because there are people who cannot afford to stop working, and so uh, Boys and Girls Club Director was in the audience, Brian Ace, and he was able to say that they're going to continue to partner with the school district um and provide childcare for those people who, those families that needed. Superintendent Michelle Whitney was um able to say that they'd already made accommodations, you know. On Friday at one thirty P M., that's when Governor Jay Inslee had made his his decision that we would close schools, and so up until that point, you know, she was struggling with the uh you know, whether to recommend to the school board whether or not to close schools. And so within four hours of having that come down from the governor's office, uh, you know, they had switched gears to now, what can we do as a school district to provide for our students who are no longer going to be in school? So there was discussions about um, you know, grab-and-go breakfast and lunch bags uh being available to students. They don't have to go to, uh, they don't have to go to school that they attend, because some some children um are going to schools, they're being bused to schools that are not in their neighborhoods, that are going to a different neighborhood, so that, I think this is a, an important piece, is that whatever elementary school, middle or high school is nearest to you, you can go to that one. And if you're, you get free mermaid lunches, you can get a a breakfast and a lunch bag at the same time. Uh, there will be some online uh resources for learning, and they're working on that. They're going to keep food pantries open within schools. For example, New Horizons has a food pantry. Um, and those those will remain open for families. Uh, there was an update that the O S T I has canceled all state testing uh for the rest of the school year. And they are, you know, re- reminding people that, you know, if somebody is of Asian descent, not to associate, uh, because students have already started to experience bullying in the schools, uh, because the first cases came out of China. And so it was a pretty emotional meeting, and there were, you know, tears, and and it's obviously not it. It's an easy time for our community, for us as a country, and so, uh, but I was very impressed and very um moved by just the school board's leadership and the superintendent's leadership, and that they have the ability of the ability to pivot quickly and start making um plans as quickly as possible to accommodate their students and families in this community. And that's all I've got on that.
Okay, well, I I I was watching the media, and I did see you there, and so I appreciate that update, and it's uh, it's good, great information. Thank you for for attending that. Okay, so next, we'll uh, we'll finish up with item ten on new business, the bid award at the Geesa Stadium batting cages, Mr. Radkay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As part of a long-term project to improve Geesa Stadium, the city of Pasco has worked with the Tri-City Dust Devils to identify a twenty twenty project that has the greatest return on investment for our facility. In twenty nineteen, we replaced the seats in the ballpark, as well as completed a comprehensive lighting upgrades. Um, subsequent projects, uh, as we complete our overall project for Geesa Stadium, um, we were focusing on player and fan experience. Both of those were discussed. In examining what would have the greatest impact to the facility and preserve the presence of the Dust Devil baseball team in the community, as well as satisfy uh facility standards for minor league baseball, an upgrade and addition of new batting cage facilities was selected as the focus product for, project for this year. The new batting cages will double capacity for practice. Um, it'll offer users protection from the sun and the wind, which is pretty important here in the tri-cities in summertime. And um they're designed in a manner to allow for the addition of fan areas above and adjacent to the structure in the future. So really laying the foundation, so to speak, um, for additional uh 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 amenities at the stadium with this project. The project meets the team need, and it also meets a required facility upgrade and paves the way for fan experience in the future. Three bids for this project were submitted and opened on March twelfth, with All-Star Construction submitting the lowest bid um for a total project amount of four hundred and three thousand, one hundred and one dollars and forty-eight cents, and that does include Washington State sales tax. With that, staff recommends council approve and award the bid as submitted in your record.
Thank you, Mr. Radkay. Any comments? Uh, I just want to say that um um I I entered into a a group of mayors just uh keeping minor league baseball in their cities. And I know that there's an issue with that, and then now with this uh this 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 uh COVID nineteen issue. Um, I'm not sure where exactly if they put a delay on the season or what the case is, but I just know that this facility is important so that uh they can have what they need to maintain a good baseball team and the things they need to do uh to attract these teams to stay in. So I I'm in favor of this, and I just wanted to make that comment. Uh, Mr. Serrano?
I appreciate that introduction, because uh anyone that knows me lo- knows I love baseball. Um, I mean, I just, I love baseball. And I've struggled with this one, because MLB has announced a minimum eight-week start delay. So you're talking the end of May. Our season is a short season, it starts mid-June. There's already the question of whether we're on the cut list as an M I L B, minor league baseball franchise. Um, now we're talking also about incurring additional costs to operate a city that's going to be decreased revenue. I say this with as as much reservation as I can. I don't know that now is the time to make this decision. Do we have an urgent time press? Can we, I mean, wait a couple weeks, bring this back to, at the next uh regular meeting? Um, I I I'm just not convinced that right now is the time. Uh, again, I support the Dust Devils, I love them, enjoy them, I appreciate them being here. But to put almost half a million dollars, I'm I'm concerned about that at this time.
Councilmember Serrano, I would like to say that I also love baseball, and I couldn't I mean, I know that's something that we have in our community, that people rally around and going to Geesa Stadium, and it's a wonderful place. I love taking my kids there, and I couldn't uh agree with you more right now. Um, I think we need to save our funds for, you know, this is, this is one of those situations where you don't, you you don't spend uh in a unwise manner. So those are my two cents.
Okay. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, perhaps uh Ms. Sigdel will be best um suited to answer this one. Uh, what funding source is paying for this? Is this already allocated funds that are coming out of something that has previously? Is this, is this a narrow bucket of money that cannot be used for something else, or is this a broader amount of money that we could repurpose?
Yes, usually we get the funds from lodging taxes. Uh, and there is some amount of reserve built into that fund or that revenue source. Uh, and of course, there's an advisory committee or an actual committee that act um that looks into those funds and um acts on how those are dispersed. And some of it goes to track, and some of it goes to uh Geesa Stadium and for some of the other businesses related to tourism as well.
So this is a a narrow funding source that we're looking at for this, for that we use for this purpose?
That is correct. Uh, and if council remembers, we did issue a two million dollar bond, uh, which uh those revenue would be, would be paid for the debt service, uh, which we did in December. And uh essentially, all of the improvements going to Geesa Stadium for the two million dollars would be coming out of that bond proceed. And the debt service would be paid with those revenue funds.
If we do have some time, I would be very interested to see, given that we are in such an emergency state right now, if there's any way of 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 repurposing that, or whether that would be something that the advisory ca- board would really want to continue seeing this money spent for. Um, Mr. Serrano and uh Mrs. Roach made excellent points.
Absolutely.
Mr. Serrano?
And I I really appreciate those questions, Councilwoman Maloney, because to the point, if if these funds are truly limited, then unquestionably, we should support local businesses in a time where local businesses are struggling. That said, if there is any way to reallocate these, uh, in my opinion, we should withhold a decision or or look into it, but again, if if we're lockstep and this is where we go, as the Councilwoman Maloney and and Ms. Sigdel, Mrs. Sigdel, your point, um, then then yeah, move forward, it makes sense.
And and I also was under the. Go ahead.
Is there the option to reallocate these? Do we have the ability to do that?
Uh, yes, there there are certain op- there are certain options to reallocate some of the bond proceeds, especially the fact that uh this is a two million dollars out of almost, uh, I've already forgotten the numbers, uh, twenty million dollar bond uh gives us a little bit more flexibility. Uh, where you really do not have a choice is when you're going for really large projects and decide to completely change course, uh, because there's a certain amount of promise that you're making to the bondholders in terms of what you're going to build with those funds. Uh, given that it is a s- fairly small portion of the bond proceed, uh, you do have uh some flexibility on how you redirect uh that. Uh, I, this project, the two million dollar Geesa Stadium improvement, has been ongoing since two thousand nineteen. So some of those funds have already been spent. Um, so I do want to reiterate that in that it is not two million dollars, but um, but possibly one million dollar if I, if I remember correctly. So you do have that option as council to reuse those proceeds for something else.
And well, and the other thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, again, it's a, it's a four hundred, approximately four hundred thousand dollar job. Uh, my understanding that there was still a seven hundred thousand dollar reserve, and if we don't do it now, I think we're running into, first of all, it was already allocated for something, it's, second of all, if we don't do it now, it may be too late uh to have an impact on keeping them here, and they're such a funding source for our community. Uh, more than just the entertainment and the quality of life it brings, uh, it's it brings a lot of taxes and revenue to have that team there in in that, in that area. So uh, I I think we really, I would, I would, I would reconsider, and you know, they're going to go there anyway. I don't think this is a a irresponsibility way to to, you know, to spend the money, because it was allocated to go with that already, and again, there there's still a seven hundred thousand dollar reserve, from my understanding. Is that, is that a correct statement?
I can come back to the council and give you a report on that. I do not remember.
And Mr. Zabel, do you have any comments?
I I think the I, the suggestion to to evaluate this a couple weeks. We don't, I don't think we're under a time crunch. We got a little bit of time to to look at the bid. I think I want to say we have thirty days to award the bid after the opening, right? Yeah, so we're 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 still in good shape on that part, uh, looking at this a couple weeks, getting council a little bit more information, I think uh is a good, good move at this point. I think you're, you know, just think about it, you know, we're a little bit uh of a double-edged sword, in that if we demonstrate a lot of hesitation about supporting the team, we kind of put ourselves in a spot of looking like we don't really support the team, and which could impact how minor league baseball looks at a cut list. If we are going to get cut and we wind up spending four hundred thousand dollars we don't need to spend or could have spent someplace else, you know, that that's kind of the rock and hard spot we're stuck between, and giving us a couple more weeks to get you a little bit more information and think about it. I think it's a good idea. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Serrano?
Uh, I think, to just be clear, I don't, for my comfort level, I don't want all options explored. Question to me that brings value is, could this be allocated to the general fund or some other operational funds? If it cannot, if it cannot help the city operate and um, you know, cover some costs that we know we're going to expend to address COVID nineteen, if this is going to go to uh, I don't, I don't think this should be allocated to another park or or something else like that. Again, if it can address operational needs when our revenue's down, more than likely, that's my question. I I can't speak to all council members, but that's, that's my concern. If it can be reallocated in a way that can help the city operate uh and fund our day-to-day, that's my question.
That, if I could respond, it it is, it would be one-time money, because it's bonded money. Uh, you, what you're giving up is the, probably the funding source. I I think Director Sigdel, what she was saying was, we have about a million dollars left that we haven't spent out of two million that was planned for that bond to come here. So the general fund could theoretically take on the debt service that other million dollars. And then you could use that million dollars much more flexibly for a capital project. Really can't use it for operational, but you could use it for a capital project. Uh, the um lodging uh tax committee could then reevaluate what they do with with the uh uh annual revenues being generated that were going to service that debt. They could find a new project or utilize it for uh tourism-type operations, which they do. That is part of what they they allocate. So they do both capital and and operations, but the dollars from the lodging tax can't be spent on general fund activities. So we we could look at that piece, and then we could also get you a little bit more information on where uh, uh, where we're at with uh minor league baseball and the Dust Devils.
I I appreciate that, and I think you've resolved a specific concern I have, which is if we can't use this to help patch some of the concerns that we're going to have to immediately a- address uh with some of the declarations and proclamations we've made tonight, my concern no longer exists. I can't speak for other council members, but then I support this to ensure that uh, at least if nothing, the city of Pasco demonstrates solidarity uh with the Dust Devils in wanting to stay off the cut list. Um, recognizing what the mayor had to say about the revenues uh and other aside from entertainment benefit that the Dust Devils bring to us. So I I'm okay with moving this forward. Um, that said, if other council members prefer to postpone it, I'm also okay with that alternative track to receive additional information.
Okay, so if we were to make a motion, um, if it was to uh to fail, we can bring it back later? Or do we have a motion to postpone it?
Uh, you could vote to approve it, vote to deny it, or direct staff to come back in a couple weeks with a little more information.
Okay, and how would the council like to proceed, Mr. Maloney?
Uh, I would prefer we 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 take two weeks to look at this. I, if it's not time sen- if we don't think that it's time-sensitive enough to make a big difference in 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 any, any things that them, if it's not a time-critical item, I would rather we do their research, um, because uh the original points that were brought up.
Mr. Malon?
That's my preference, too.
Yeah, I'd echo uh, Mr. Maloney's uh comment. I feel more comfortable as well.
Do we need to make a motion to postpone? Do we need to make a motion to postpone?
I don't think you really need to do that.
So we could just postpone this.
Yeah, we're just tabling it till.
Tableing till further uh further information on this. Mister Radkay, thank you very much and we'll be looking forward to additional information, um, the questions that the council had asked.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. We'll see you back in two weeks.
Alright, thank you. And thank you, council. It's always good to have the discussions. Alright, uh next on the agenda, miscellaneous discussion. Does anybody have any uh thing else they would like to discuss? Mister Maloney?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, so I'm I'm sure that you're all in the same boat I am where there's a whole bunch of different events, fundraisers and other community events. That have been being canceled. Um, we are, um, as as many of you know, I'm on the uh Pasco Taco Crawl Committee. And we haven't made a formal announcement yet, but we're we're strongly evaluating canceling that event and that's a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Clubs. Um, they also had, the Boys and Girls Clubs is another great example of a, they had to cancel their fundraising breakfast. And that typically raised them a good portion of their operating revenue for the year. So I'd just like to remind everyone that we have a lot of nonprofits and other organizations that are really struggling right now. This is an opportunity that if you have the uh the capacity in your own personal finances, that it's really, this is a really good time to look at what co- what. What um organizations have to step up and provide additional services in a time like this. Um, such as the Boys and Girls Clubs helping take that additional childcare burden uh in a time that no one anticipated they would. So please feel, definitely take a look into which which nonprofits mean something to you and and maybe struggling and see about. If you can stretch your budget a little further and and help them if they can. Additionally, um, small businesses right now are going to be suffering mildly. Um, companies that are, that support events, um, which they're all being canceled now. Or um restaurants and um and others and wineries and and such that that are no longer able to get the same revenue that they were were in the past. Um, I would really recommend you look to to them, see if you can um purchase from the curbside or have delivered. A lot of places are changing their processes, um, so they can be more accessible. I really worry for my friends that own small businesses right now. They are hurting and they're going to be hurting much worse. And I'm, I'm afraid that their dreams are gonna be crushed. And so the one of the ways we can help that is by us individually making choices when we purchase and when we spend our money, that we keep it local. We keep it focused on those businesses that are going to, gonna hit that cash crunch and. And help keep them afloat. So when when we're in, when the uh, when we're past this, that they're still here, there's their businesses are still operating for for us to enjoy. And for our friends to have, have the American dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Maloney. And I'd like to to uh just make you aware. I got a email from the Tri-City Regional Chamber of Commerce and they're uh, they sent out for immediate release. The S B A Small Business Association offers disaster assistance to Washington's small business economically impacted by the corona, uh, the coronavirus. So uh for those who are listening and are small businessmen, and maybe we can relay some information. Is to uh have them contact the Tri-City Chamber of Commerce and there can be some assistance for them. Cause I have, we all have the same sentiment as you. Thank you very much. Any other miscellaneous items?
Mayor, that might be worth uh linking to on our Facebook page.
Sure, I'll have John, I'll have John help me assist me with that. Thank you.
I have one thing, Mayor Martinez. Is it okay if I?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, my husband started a Facebook group called Flattening the Curve. Um, within a matter of days, there've been three thousand people plus who have joined that Facebook group. Um, and the, the, you know, crisis that we find ourselves in, there are, there's silver linings to this. And one of those has has been watching uh the number of people who have signed up to be volunteers. In case there's a need for rapid response teams to deliver groceries or medicine. Uh, we've had over a hundred people already uh sign uh up at in a proper form. Names, addresses, phone numbers, contact information, willing to do exactly that. And it's, you know, continuing to give me heart in this difficult time. But I think, you know, first and foremost, I I do understand and I don't wanna minimize the impact, the economic impact. This is gonna have on every single person. Um, but there is also a need to put our health first. Because if we don't have our health, then we have nothing else. And so taking the measures of social distancing seriously. And obviously, I can see that that's happening down at City Hall with everybody spaced apart. Um, but I know that as a community, that we are, you know, we are strong. And we are resilient and we're gonna see um the ways in which we are after this passes. And we start to pick up pieces and and put ourselves back together. And so I just wanna say, please take care of yourselves, take care of your bodies, um, and put your health first.
Thank you, thank you, Zara. Thank you, Mrs. Roach, for that. Okay, and let's see, let me go back here. With that, um, do we, do we have a need for an executive session tonight? Thank you, Mister Deble, and we'll go to thirteen. This meeting, well, once again, thank you, everybody, for uh withstand in this long meeting. And um let's just pull together and do what we gotta do to to maintain this awesome community. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.